Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of Monday, March 13th, 2023. I now call the meeting to order, and I will ask Commissioner Vivar to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anna, roll call vote, please.
Chair Aaron.
Present.
Vice Chair Toller.
Here.
Commissioner Rojas.
Here.
Commissioner Zick.
Here.
Commissioner Andrade.
Here.
Commissioner Vivar.
Present.
Commissioner Taber.
Here.
Thank you, Anna, I appreciate that. We have no announcements or presentations this evening, though I think we have one for Commissioner comments, which takes us to public comments, which are matters not listed on the agenda. I will now open the comment period and see if you'd like to speak. Please come to the podium, or if you're participating by Zoom, use the raised hand option at the bottom of the screen. And if you're joining the meeting on your phone and would like to speak, please press star nine. Do we have anyone in chambers who wishes to speak? Scene nine. Anna, do we have anyone on telephone or Zoom?
Mai, you may provide your public comment.
Hi there, everyone. My name is Mia Yuan, and I am a Merp graduate student at UC Irvine. I am currently in a planning career development course where we have the opportunity to hear from planning practitioners from the public and private sector and learn about their career journey and some of their current responsibilities. So one of our assignments this quarter is to make a public comment at a public agency meeting, which is why I'm here today. But since attending a couple of planning commissions for both the city of Irvine and Costa Mesa, I definitely enjoy hearing about new projects and believe that these meetings are very beneficial for residents to learn more about what is happening in their hometown. And it's interesting to learn one thing in class, such as housing affordability, and then be able to see that concept being utilized in cities and understand the decision-making process. So I just want to say thank you for making this my first public comment, and I appreciate the work that all of you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. And please note that you're always welcome to come here in person. We'd be glad to have you. So thank you for calling in this evening. Anna, anyone else?
No, there's not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. So that brings us to Planning Commissioner comments and suggestions. And at this time, I will ask if anyone would like to make their comment, starting with Commissioner Rojas.
I have no comments.
Okay, Commissioner Zick.
Thank you. Another request. I was checking the retail cannabis application status on the city's website. The spreadsheet that is posted there is dated January 14, 2022, so it's over a year old. If it'd be possible to update that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Commissioner Andrade.
I'm at the same.
Commissioner Taber.
No comment at this time.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Vivar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If Mia's still listening, thank you for your comment tonight, and please feel free to reach out as well if you'd like to know more about the planning work and what we do. And I'm glad that you're participating in this class, and I hope that coming to these meetings and learning about planning work and government work in your classes has inspired you to step up your own civic engagement. So wherever you live or study, you are a member of that community, or work for that matter. So definitely keep in the loop of what is going on and stay involved. It's important for good functioning government to have involved citizenry. So thank you for your comments for us tonight, and to all those who also follow these meetings on YouTube and in person, thank you all as well for following the work of the city of Costa Mesa. Also, I am aware that the city will soon, in the near future, begin work on 19th Street and Placentia Avenue. So I'm sure that Mr. Yang at some point can give an update on that. So just wanted to thank the city for its work on our streets and being able to make sure that streets are safe for everyone to travel on, making sure that we are improving that bikeability and walkability connections. And so thank you to your hard work staff for all of that, and that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. I think I'll go ahead and let Vice Chair Toller be the anchor this evening, so I'll jump in here. And I don't have too much to share other than to wish everyone in the public happy, belated, holy. I'm not sure if everyone knows what holy is, but it's the Indian festival where you throw paint at each other, and it's a festival of color, if you will. So my girlfriend and I went to Mile Square Park this weekend and participated in that. It was an absolute blast. So anytime you can participate in the cultural festivals, I definitely recommend it. So with that said, I'll hand it over to the Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll echo Commissioner Vivar's comments and give a shout out to Public Works because we recently heard at a January City Council meeting that Placentia, if I am not mistaken, Placentia, 19th Street, and Fairview are going to have some improvements that make walking and biking safer. So that is great, and I'm glad we're moving in that direction. I was biking today, I biked back from the Ballerique Center because I was at a public meeting that I'll mention in a second, but I rode on some of those streets, including Placentia, and I encourage everybody to substitute a car trip with a bike ride or a walk once in a while, or even transit throughout the city, because I found little pieces of Costa Mesa that I've never seen before on the way here. I was at that center because there is a public meeting from the state, and I wasn't going to mention this, but I just remembered that the public comment period ends on March 31st. So this is almost our last chance for us to mention that. So there's a, the Fairview Developmental Center belongs to the state, and about 15 acres, if I'm not mistaken, is being held back by the state so they could build an emergency operations center that will serve, I believe, the southern half of the entire state of California, complete with 35,000 square foot office building, 20,000 square foot warehouse, a Haley pad, things like that. So I think on the city's social media, city website, we might be able to find some information. But getting your comments then to the environmental consultant, we only have a couple of weeks for what they should be studying in the EIR. So that was a little preface. I have a quick little thing on parking in the city because we have such a short meeting tonight. I want to make it worth everybody's time coming here. Currently, so parking in our city's future, and I keep wanting to bring this up because we're at a turning point in the city and we have a lot of density, a lot of new housing that's going to be coming in over the next decade. Currently, like so many cities in the United States, we withhold building permits until applicants can show us that they're designing their own properties around accommodating cars to our satisfaction. A few months ago, something that still bothers me a little bit, we approved a four-unit project in what is arguably downtown, under the condition that they provide 15 parking spaces on their site in addition to those four units, on just a little residential lot. And thinking, scaling that across all sorts of different projects, it's easy to see how that could mess up pro formas, get in the way of design, make housing just not pencil out and make housing less affordable for people. And so requiring parking, using government power to require parking from developers is going out of style. The city of Bend, Oregon, not too long ago, voted to eliminate parking minimums in the city to help reduce the cost of new housing, reduce vehicle emissions, and encourage more walkable communities. Nearby Salem, they have been not requiring parking for missing middle housing types, and now they're taking it a step further and studying the elimination completely. Culver City famously abolished minimum parking requirements citywide. Councilmember Alex Fish said, "I cannot think of a single good reason to require all of society to pay for parking." There is robust evidence, and this is an attorney speaking, right? This isn't BuzzFeed or anything. There is robust evidence that mandatory parking prevents affordable housing from being built, causes people to drive, and increases the cost of literally everything. San Jose, just a couple of months ago, citywide, largest city in the United States to abolish parking, no ifs, ands, or buts. In the planning world, this is an obvious trend. Patrick Siegman asks, "Was 2021 the year that US planners finally lost faith in minimum parking requirements?" New York Times says it well, "Awash in asphalt, cities rethink their parking needs." I encourage everybody to look up this article. It was just a couple of weeks ago. I also encourage everybody to visit parkingreform.org. This is a group called the Parking Reform Network, and very conveniently for the rest of us, they track all these ordinance in every city in the United States. So what you're seeing now is a map of every city in the US that has eliminated parking minimums citywide. And these are cities where they've done something like that, just downtown, just in certain districts. UCLA professor of economics Donald Shoup says, "In the high cost of free parking," which the APA, the American Planning Association, published in 2005, "I argued that minimum parking requirements subsidize cars, increase traffic congestion, pollute the air, encourage sprawl, increase housing costs, degrade urban design, prevent walkability, damage the economy, and penalize poor people. Since then, to my knowledge, no member of the planning profession has argued that parking requirements do not cause these harmful effects. Instead, a flood of recent research has shown that they do cause these harmful effects. Parking requirements and zoning ordinance are poisoning our cities with too much parking. Minimum parking requirements are a fertility drug for cars." Louis Mumford, who was born in the 1800s, so he noticed this really early, he said, "To the right to have access to every building in the city by private motorcar in an age when everyone possesses such a vehicle is actually the right to destroy the city." And so this is to Shoup's point. Planning around cars works against walkability, against urban design, and that's because cities, by their nature, the whole idea of a city is based on our understanding as humans that proximity is beneficial. And the idea of everybody driving for everything, that culture that we have, just throws a wrench in that, and we end up, project by project, squirming and wringing our hands and not knowing, walking on eggshells, I guess, trying to make two incompatible things So even the staunchest NIMBYs, I think, they see that we are densifying, we are going to grow. Costa Mesa is an urban place. There's not a lot of fields and chickens anymore like there used to be. And as we grow, if we're going to grow, I think most people would say, okay, grow like this. This looks, most of these pictures, I think, resonate with us. Like, yeah, that's the kind of growth we want to see. But we need to make a decision on this because nothing we see here, almost, is compatible with requiring the kind of parking requirements that we conventionally require. What you see on your screens now is a reluctant city. Cities that are densifying, maybe against their will, but they're trying to have their cake and eat it. This is the anti-city. It's a cartoon of a city. It's density without the convenience that density should offer. It's people living on top of each other in a car-dependent environment, and that's what a lot of cities in California are doing right now. That's what they're ending up as because they're still trying to accommodate cars as they grow. And so we need to be very careful about this as we move forward, so that's why I keep bringing it up. So this is something, especially talking about the Fairview Developmental Center, this is something people call a car-light eco-district. When you think of our opportunity sites, there's a lot of big sites, and we try to imagine, well, what does that look like? People are saying high-density development, high-rises. These are the sort of things, these are the sort of places we could make if we stop designing around the automobile and assuming two, two-and-a-half units, or car spaces per unit. And so I just want to leave everybody with that. I'm not saying that if we eliminate parking requirements, we're going to get this wonderful sort of urbanism you see here, but I will say that unless we take a hard look at our parking requirements as we move forward, this kind of stuff is impossible, and we're going to get, we're going to get the kind of car-centric, noisy, uncomfortable density that the NIMBYs are justifiably afraid of. So if we want to go in this direction, we need to think about parking in our city. And that's it. That's my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Toller. That was absolutely fascinating. I appreciate you sharing that. I think this might actually be a good opportunity for us to beta-test some open dialogue about what was just presented. So if you feel like commenting on that and having a little bit of cross dialogue, I encourage you to. Feel free to just turn on your mic if you'd like. Commissioner Vivar.
Yeah. I appreciate Vice Chairman Toller's presentation. I will admit, I have not done my research on this topic, but someone who does work in the transportation engineering world and kind of seeing how things work, developers will try to include parking when they can because most people, whether we like it or not, drive because it, the opportunities, especially in a place like Southern California to travel further distances, like myself, who live 40 miles away from my workplace in downtown LA, can't really get to by public transit as easily as I would like. So I take a van pool, which is fine, getting the opportunity to cut down on vehicle trips, on vehicle miles traveled with one vehicle as opposed to four or five different ones and the riders in that vehicle. So for example, and I have, I work in the, I've been doing work for the permit counter at the LEDOT, and we had a pretty bad situation recently where there was a 10-foot driveway that was being proposed on a major street akin to Harbor Boulevard. And we said, hey, you're going to have to widen your driveway to at least a minimum of 20 feet for vehicles to be able to make safe entries and exits. And, you know, you're going to have to be able to do this because we don't, we will not allow for, we will not allow a driveway setup that will basically make people back out onto the public right-of-way when one vehicle is trying to exit and one coming in. That's, I guess, and just on another topic I'd like to at some point address here is sort of the driveway requirements that are kind of related to parking. And so I told that developer, you know, the applicant, hey, you're going to have to provide that 20-foot minimum, or you can, or I presented another sort of layout that they could use for their parking to allow for that 20-by-20-foot reservoir space that allows for vehicles to turn onsite and not need to exit onto the busy street. And I said, look, what you could do if you're having difficulty redesigning your project to allow for the parking that you want to have for your residential building, you could get rid of all of the parking. And in fact, the city of LA does now have incentives for people to be able to do that, developers. So I said, look, you can do that if you want to. You know, it'll be a quick approval on our end. Get rid of your parking, or you can have this other driveway setup that is going to be a bit more difficult for you to have to go through, to provide our sort of safety minimums for driver with and turning space or reservoir space on site. And they chose to keep their parking. They didn't do away with their parking. So I do agree with the push to have less, that, you know, not have, not obligate developers to have a certain number of parking spaces, like that subdivision that you may all remember from a couple of meetings ago, where it was two units, and each one was providing, I believe it was four parking spaces, or it was four. If this were to be a family home, a single family, if each of those were to occupy, be occupied by a family, I could see at least a minimum of two vehicles being necessary for two working parents if there were in that family unit. But, and you could have a third space for guests, for example, or for, for maybe a teenager who at some point learned to drive and wanted to have a vehicle. But having four spaces, to me, seemed much. Now, I don't know if that means that the solution is getting rid of minimum parking requirements or lowering the number of parking spaces that we require per square footage. So those are just my thoughts on this. I haven't come to any conclusion myself of what the solution is, but I will say that parking will be built, whether we like it or not. And I think the way to really move away from parking is to develop a more robust public transportation system, and, you know, we can do that by, for example, creating bus lanes and allowing buses to have, you know, faster access through cities as opposed to letting them get congested in traffic and showing people that buses, you know, can be a quicker, cheaper way to travel, cleaner way to travel. But parking requirements are definitely an issue that I think should be looked at, but I myself don't know what the solution is to that. And that's, those are my thoughts. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Vivar. Anyone else up here? Commissioner Andrade.
Yeah, it's, thanks so much for the presentation, Vice Chair. It's great work. And so along the likability efforts that are happening in Placentia, it was really great to see how we're planting, making some greater holes to plant some trees to make it more comfortable to actually walk, especially in the summer months here in Southern and warm California. Is there, so I'm not very, I'm not familiar with the approval process or opportunities to expand maybe that same effort to other streets that are frequently traveled on foot. You know, the whole Wilson corridor, which really great that it has been repaved to accommodate all the many cars that traffic to there, but that's also a very heavy walking street. More crosswalks would be great. I know that there was a commission that was separately looking at, or a case study that was looking at that separately to make it more walkable, but is there an opportunity to plant more trees along that Wilson Street corridor in this project, or is that pretty much tied up, locked in? Not sure. Maybe the engineer or anyone else can speak to that.
Commissioner Andrade, there will be more opportunities to plant trees. As showcased in the Costa Mesa minute, we planted trees along Placentia Avenue, and the goal is, is to be honest to our work, to be a Tree City USA for the city of Costa Mesa. So there'll be more opportunities to plant more trees in our CIP projects for street improvements along the way. Thank you.
Is that all? Okay, thank you, Commissioner Andrade. Any other commissioners like to jump in? Yes, Commissioner Taber.
Yeah, Vice Chair Toller, thanks for putting that together. I think it's cool to kind of like think outside the box, and as the world is changing, that maybe we're not stuck in the same ways as the past, but we can think about the future, think about what we want our city to look like and to be like, and, you know, we're on the verge of self-driving cars and shared cars and all these other options that are going to be emerging. So it's good to think about the future when we're planning and not just do everything because that's the way it's been done in the past. So thank you. It's a kind of encouraging presentation and thinking outside the box.
Cool. And if I may, in case there was any misunderstanding for Commissioner Vivar's point, I wasn't, there are, you know, there's such thing as parking maximums that some cities have experimented with, but that's pretty rare. I wasn't arguing for that. I was arguing against the minimums. So, yeah, developers still provide parking. They know that if they want to sell the house sometimes, that's a big deal. And I would argue, let them decide how much the market needs, how much people are willing to pay for that, and how that fits into their pro formas.
Thank you, Commissioners. Any other Commissioners wish to speak? No? Nope. I think I will go ahead and close it out by saying, thanks again, Vice Chair, for making the presentation. I do look forward to these, and I do look forward to the opportunity where we can have a little bit more cross-talk about, you know, what is the long-term vision of the city, and I'm sure we're going to hear a lot about that when staff make their presentation this evening. But, you know, I'm brought to multiple ideas about parking minimums, parking maximums, what is the importance of the vehicle in this city. You know, as many people may know, Costa Mesa was developed in the post-World War era. It was adopted during the time when the concept of a single-family home and freeways and larger roads were being adopted, concept of personal freedom to go about and do what you want. And like many people before me, when I turned 16, I could not wait to get my car. And I will readily admit that I still love my 4Runner very much, and I like driving it. And I can also recognize the fact that oftentimes, the reality is our city is changing. And it's, you know, are we really being pitted in this kind of push-pull situation where it's, you know, housing, or cars, or both, or none? What are, what are we doing ultimately? And I think that wherever we fall on the spectrum of this vision, it's good to at least talk about it so that we can all evolve our thinking. I think in that same vein, you know, there's right, right around to my left, this door right here, and you go through these doors and you look to that first picture to the left, that's my grandfather on January 1st, 1960, for the opening day of Mesa Water District. He was the, basically, the field manager. He's standing front and center in that picture. When my family came here back in the mid-'50s, there was pretty much nothing but fields here. It was all farmland. And it brings me to this idea that, you know, even when my family moved here almost 75 years ago, the idea was to develop, to become something more. And it is, as it just so happens, we're at another launching point to decide where is it that we want to go? Do we want to hold on to vehicles and say, yes, everyone's personal vehicle is of the utmost importance? Yes, single-family homes and large footprints in a relatively small geographic area is the most important? You know, I don't know the answer to that. It's rather philosophical, and I would argue a personal one, but as a practical matter, I think it requires us to at least envision, how much space do we have and how are we going to provide it to our people? So when I think back to my grandfather, Raymond Albert Perry, in that picture, and my family moving here from the East Coast back in the mid-'50s to build the water infrastructure for this city, the idea was we want to become more. And with that, I will, again, thank you, Vice Chair. I appreciate the presentation. With that said, that now brings us to- With that said, that now brings us to our consent calendar. We have one item, which is the minutes for February 27th, 2023. Commissioners, do you have any comments on the minutes after reading them? Comments or suggestions, possible changes, revisions, additions? None? Okay. Seen none. May I have a motion, please? Everyone, anyone? I'll make, I'll make the motion. I will make the motion to approve the minutes as written. Is there a second? Seconded by Vice Chair Toler. I have no comments.
No comments.
No comments. Okay, Anna, if we could have the vote, please.
Commissioner Taber, if you don't mind recording your vote? That motion carries 7-0.
All right, thank you, Anna. 7-0 is always good. Okay, this brings us to our public hearing. We have, if we can go to public hearing item number one, if you could read that, please.
Public hearing item number one, one-year time extension for PA 1929 for Cannabis Manufacturing Facility Complex Plus at 3505 Cadillac Avenue, Unit 0106. Please note, we have not received public comments on this item. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
Thank you, Anna. Any ex parte to report, Commissioners? Seen none? None? I have none to report either. I will now turn it over to Mr. Akas to present the item. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Patrick Akas with the Planning Division. I'll deliver a very brief report tonight regarding this extension. Specifically, it's a one-year time extension of a conditional use permit that was previously seen by the Commission in April of 2020. It was for a Cannabis Manufacturing Facility, a Type 7 license, and an existing industrial tenant space. There'd be no distribution of cannabis and no retail sales at the site. This is simply a time extension. There are no proposed changes to the original project or the conditions that were associated with that approval. The project's location is within an industrial condominium complex. Below the site is the 405 freeway. To the east lies the San Ana River. Here's a visual overview of the project timeline. The Planning Commission first approved PA 1929 in April 13th, 2020. That was set to expire two years on April 13th, 2022. The Director did extend the approval by six months through October 10th, 2022, and the applicant did file an extension. And that's what you're seeing before you for the one year. There was a Scrivener's error in the staff report noting that the extension would be until March 13th of 2024. But to be clear, it would just be until March 13th, 2023. And that'll be one year from the expiration of the Director's approval. So it would extend to, or I'm sorry, it would extend to October 9th, 2023. Here's an overview of some of the existing site. In the lower left, you'll see the entrance to Suite 0106. This would also be used for the route to the vehicle. The conditions of approval again remain the same from PA 1929. There are over 69 conditions, including over 30 from Measure X provisions, including the time to obtain a business permit, distribution hours, signage, prohibition on, on site consumption, and prohibition for minors, those under 21. There's also site-specific conditions included for designated loading and unloading areas and delivery vehicles. Included in the original approval, remain unchanged would be HDL, the city's security consultants' conditions of approval. They talk about surveillance cameras throughout the licensed premise, increased lighting, installation of self-closing and self-latching solid-core doors, and secure windows and doors. In order to approve the one-year extension, the Planning Commission must find that there are no changes in regulations or the general plan or zoning that would have otherwise constitute denial of the project or a changing in the findings of the original project. Again, in this case, there are no changes to the original project. There are no subsequent changes in the zoning or the general plan that would otherwise be grounds for denial of the one-year extension. So staff recommends that the Commission recertify the existing facilities, class one exemption, and to approve the time extension for one year through October 9th of 2023. The applicant Bruce, Bruce Ensiman of Complex Plus is here and available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Akas. I appreciate that. Before the applicant comes up, Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff, starting with Commissioner Zick?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Akas. The 2024 was a question I had. Thank you for clearing that up. In terms of the first extension, which was granted April 11th, 2022, when did the applicant provide their written request for that extension? I'm assuming they have to do it no less than 30 days, no greater than 60 days. So when was that request submitted?
Yeah, I don't think we have record of that here, Commissioner Zick. I will mention that it was timely, though, in that we approved it.
Okay, and then the second question relating to that approval. So the Director approved that extension. Why is the Planning Commission being requested to grant this next extension?
That's an excellent question. After the six-month extension from Director, the only body that can provide further time is the Planning Commission. And the code does not designate how long that extension is. It's based on the merits and, again, the idea that there are no changes in the regulations that would necessitate denial.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Any other Commissioners wish to ask any questions of staff? Commissioner Vivar.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will ask a question that maybe is going to be a dumb one, but I'm really, I, I'm so kind of confused about this point, why this application needs a, um, an extension at all? Because I, I mean, I, I'll admit, I, you know, I've only been on Planning Commission since September of 2021. And at this point, everything that I've seen, including Measure X facilities, which this is one of them, everything has been approved and doesn't seem to have a, or at least I don't, I haven't seen that they have time, um, lengths of time that they can operate for when they're given that COP. So is there a particular reason that this Measure X facility's COP was only valid for two years and now they have to come back to us? And will we see every other Measure X facility also come back to us in two years?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Vivar. I'll take this question. The applications that are, that have come in front of you in the past actually did include expiration periods. It is standard for the city's applications to be two years. And in this situation, and most of the other application situations, the reason that time extent, there, there's a limitation to entitlements is that when situations change, site conditions, general plan or zoning or land use modifications occur, we want to make sure that we can re, take a relook at situations where permanent entitlements could be modified to be more consistent with current conditions and, and zoning standards and conditions of the general plan. So in short, that was a long answer to your, your, your question. And the, the applications certainly are required to have this two-year extension of, not two-year extension, but two-year time limit for an entitlement. And the way that you can not have that go void on you or expire is you can start your work. So hopefully that answers your question.
By start the work, thank you, Mr. Assistant Director for that. So you're saying that work wasn't started within two years, which then meant that they had to ask, they, they were required to get, seek an extension if they wanted to continue with this business and with business venture? And now the code requires further extension to be given by us, the Planning Commission?
That is correct. The applicant indicated that he had some financial issues with the pandemic occurring, and it took a little bit longer for him to get the entitlement straightened out to where he could begin construction. And now he requires, when we spoke to him last and currently, after we spoke to him recently, he said that the year would be enough to start that.
Was the one-year extension something that the applicant requested? Or was that the staff that recommended the one-year extension?
The, the applicant requested it when staff mentioned it to him that it was a requirement.
Mm-hmm, right. And I guess my final question is, I've, and again, this might just be an ignorant question, so I apologize in advance if it is. But when I've seen staff reports for Measure Q facilities, there seems, seems to be a section about the, I guess, the capital and the business, um, the proper, you know, how well the business, potential business owner is prepared for operating that type of use? So did the Measure X application, staff report for this application back in 2019 have that analysis of staff on whether or not the applicant had the finances to be able to go forward with this business venture?
You know, that's a great question, Commissioner Vivar. I, I know that the HDL did review the application and for the safety requirements as I was reviewing it, but I actually don't recall if I saw something in there about how they do with the current Measure Q businesses. Perhaps the Director can help me with that one.
So for, for Measure X businesses, HDL does a similar financial analysis at the review of the initial application. In terms of sort of a re-review for extension purposes, HDL does not re-review for financial feasibility. Essentially, it's the applicant's request to have the extension so that they feel that they can meet their timelines to move forward with construction.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. So would it be a fair assessment to say that HDL's initial analysis of the application came to the conclusion that the project, the business venture would be financially viable and turned out not to be?
HDL's conclusion was that it met the requirements for financial feasibility to move forward with the application. Otherwise, the Planning Commission would not have seen the original conditional use permit. It would have stopped earlier in the process. So HDL did make that finding. I wouldn't necessarily say that it wasn't a financially feasible. It just seems that the applicants run into some stumbling blocks along the way.
I see, right. Thank you, Ms. Lee. I defer to you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Any other Commissioners wish to ask questions of staff? Seen none. I do have one question, Mr. Akas. If we turn to page three of the agenda report and the bullet point off-site distribution hours, this is more just to jog my memory. Are there other Measure X businesses who have shorter hours of operation for the distribution hours than this one? And, and the only reason why I'm asking, I would have done the research this weekend, but I was a little bit tied up. For some reason, I want to say that there are other Measure X businesses that, that cannot deliver between midnight and 7:00 AM, but this one says 5:00 AM. So I'm, I'm, maybe you just clarify it.
Perhaps I can answer that since I was here during that period. So it is standard for no deliveries to occur midnight to 5:00 AM.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Ms. Lee. That's all for me. So at this point, unless anyone has any other questions? Seen none? Okay. I will ask the applicant to come up. And if you can, please state your name for the record and let us know if you've read the staff report and the conditions of approval, and do you agree to them?
My name is Bruce Entizem. I have read the staff report.
Then I agree with him.
You do? Okay. I'm not sure if you've prepared anything for a presentation this evening, but you're welcome to speak to whatever you'd like, sir.
To be honest, I don't, we went through an extensive presentation for the approval, and I wasn't sure if it's, there's one required for an extension, so. But as Patrick mentioned, we, after COVID, we hit a block of vacancy in one of our buildings. We own our buildings free and clear in Costa Mesa. We've been there since 2012. And we have secured financing to move forward with the project, and we'd like to get started and submit to the Building Department as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you, sir. At this point, I'll ask if any Commissioners wish to ask the applicant any questions? All right. Mr. Entizem, thank you so much. He can have a seat. I appreciate that. So with no questions for the applicant, I will now open, um, open things up to the public comments. If you wish to speak to this item, please approach the podium if you're in chambers. If on Zoom, use the raised hand option. If you're joining the meeting on your phone and would like to speak, please press star nine. I don't see anyone here in chambers, so Anna, do we have anyone online?
No, there's not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'm going to close the public comment portion of the public meeting and ask Commissioners if you have any further questions for the applicant or staff. All right? Commissioner Vivar?
Yeah, I do have one final question. So what, and this is a theoretical, but what were to happen if within the year that were grant, if it were to be granted at tonight's meeting, the applicant still was not able to move forward with the project and was having issues? Would they need to come back to us for yet another extension? Or would that be a Director decision?
Yeah, that is correct, Commissioner Vivar. They would, they've gone through, they're allowed six-month Director approval, and any remaining extensions would have to come through the Planning Commission.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Thank you, Mr. Dropkin. And I will ask if the applicant has any closing comments. You're certainly welcome to make them if you'd like, or if not, that's fine, too. Okay, seen none? All right. We'll now close the public hearing and ask the Commission if anyone would like to make Motion made by Commissioner Toler. What is your motion?
I move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of SEQA per Guideline Section 15301 and approve Planning Application 2238 to extend the entitlement, Planning Application 1929, by one additional year through October 9th, 2024. Oh, wait.
I see that it's written 24. Do we, is it for 23 or 24?
Through... Yeah, it was, it was an error. 23, please.
Motion is to extend one year through October 19th, 2023.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Toler. If the Commission will note that it, that in the second point is to approve the entitlement to October 9th, 2023. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Rojas. Commissioner Toler, do you wish to speak to your motion?
No, I think, um, thank you, staff, for preparing this. This is going per procedure, and I'm sure we have good reasons for doing this, but I don't see any, my, any reason to raise my eyebrows. So looks good to me.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Rojas?
No comments, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, great. All right, so unless there are any other motions, I'll ask Anna to do the roll call,
That motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, Anna. Another 7-0. I can't believe it. Thank you, Anna. Another seven zero. I can't believe it. So that decision is final unless appealed to the City Council within seven days. Good luck to you, sir. Thank you. So I think at this point, before we get into new business, let's go ahead and take a five-to-ten-minute break, and we'll see you back in that time. Thank you. Welcome back to the Planning Commission meeting, March 13th, 2023. I call the meeting back into order, and we will move on to new business. I see that we have no old business. So I will now turn it over to Mr. Drapkin for the presentation.
Thank you, Chair. We're actually going to share this presentation between Ms. Lee and myself. And I believe she's going to start it off for us and then maybe end it as well. So it should end on a good note.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drapkin. And if I can just say next slide, if you're controlling the PowerPoint. Thank you. Okay, so commissioners, we wanted to provide this year-end review for you for the year 2022. And this is the first time that we'll be giving this type of year-end overview, but it's something that we've been wanting to do for some time and that we expect to continue to do moving forward. So I'm going to start with really just an overview of the presentation, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Drapkin to cover the Planning Commission statistics and an overview of the operations of the Development Services Department. And then I'll end the presentation with a look ahead for major, major planning efforts coming soon. So with that, next slide, please. Just a little refresher on the mission statement of, that was adopted by our City Council. It's the City of Costa Mesa serves our residents, businesses, and visitors while promoting a safe, inclusive, and vibrant community. Next slide, please. The council in 2021, when it had its first goal-setting retreats, set that mission statement as well as these five council objectives. Recruit and retain high-quality staff. Achieve long-term fiscal sustainability. Strengthen the public safety and improve quality of life. Diversify, stabilize, and increase housing to reflect community needs. And advance environmental and sustainability, environmental sustainability, and climate resiliency. And the council has been consistent, this was intended, these were intended to be strategic plan goals for the 2021 to 2024 period. And again, the council holds a retreat approximately every six months to check in with the city manager and department directors to ensure that our goals and objectives and the specific six-month objectives that the council sets out are consistent and that staff is appropriately following up on those things. Next slide, please. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Drapkin for an overview of our department's operations.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. First of all, the city's Development Service Department consists of essentially five teams. The Planning Division is the team that the commission interfaces with most. But as you know, there are several other teams on the second floor of City Hall that provide critical, critical community services. The other teams include Economic Development, Building and Safety, Community Improvement, and Housing. The Development Service Department includes approximately 50 employees. The city's Building Department has 18 staff that consists of plan reviewers, inspectors, and administrative staff. The Community Improvement, also known as Code Enforcement, has 12 staff that mostly consists of enforcement officers that complete inspections and respond to public concerns regarding property maintenance and land use compliance. The Economic Development Department is a relatively new team. That includes one staff member responsible for the city's economic development efforts. Among other tasks, this team interfaces with new businesses that are interested in coming into the city and also attends conferences and other events to advertise the city has a great place to do business. The planning team consists of 11 staff members, and they, they're generally the city's first line of public and developer interface and here to assist with the business operations and development compliance, such as the types of business allowed in certain locations and the intensity of development that is allowed on a specific property. Last but not least is the city's housing team. These three staff assist the administering of local, state, and federal grants to improve the city's housing stock. They're also quite busy. So now I'll go into each individual division a little bit more, but not too much. The Planning Division is the primary city staff department that works with the state and regional entities to ensure that general plan and zoning codes are consistent with many mandates adopted every year by the state. For example, the Planning Division works directly with the HCD to modify the city's housing element update in compliance with the state so to obtain state certification. Planning Division also worked recently with the HCD to update the city's ADU requirements to be in compliance with state law. The Planning Division is also responsible for updating the community and urban plans per the City Council's community vision and essentially advancing, advanced planning efforts. With over 20 general plan land use districts, including specific plans and urban plans, and a similar amount of zoning districts, as you can see by the colorful land use plan on this slide, the city has a diverse land use scheme in Development Service Department. And specifically, the city's Planning Division is responsible for administering the city's land use within these districts. Generally, the land use diversity of the city focuses on intensive commercial uses nearest the city's commercial corridors, such as Newport Boulevard, Harbor Boulevard, Bristol Street, and 17th Street. Less intensive neighborhood commercial uses located just behind the commercial uses on the corridors and residential uses beyond the second layer and lesser intensive neighborhood commercial uses. Just beyond the neighborhood commercial uses where the city's residential zones are generally located, these zones are generally include higher residential densities toward the commercial areas and single-family residential areas a little further back on the spectrum. The city's land use area also includes light industrial areas, industrial parks, permitted open space, parks, and a significant cultural arts center. With the many new state mandates, the city's land use scheme will need to be reconsidered to provide the community and the state need for housing and also still be consistent with the city's built environment vision. As the commission is well aware, one of the planning team's main purpose is to process entitlement for decision-maker approval. Typically, the applications require staff to prepare 10- to 20-page staff report and work upfront extensively with the applicants to modify uses and developments to be in compliance with the city's general plan and zoning code. For example, this year, the planning staff processed more than 20 cannabis applications for Planning Commission review, and each one of these applications required extensive upfront work with the applicant and the site visits. In addition, staff provided several study sessions to inform the Planning Commission on the cannabis regulations. As you can see by this slide, the Planning Commission team was busy in 2022 with processing approximately 42 projects to public hearing, numerous code amendments, 30 expedited zoning administrator reviews, and more than 100 staff reports in support for approximately 20 Planning Commission hearings. In total, I would estimate that the staff prepared about 5,000 pages of project reporting and analysis. The planning team is the first line of review for many of the projects that obtained building permits in the city. In this effort, the planning team is, the planning team in 2022 reviewed more than 2,000 administrative building permit requests, such as tenant improvements for new businesses, room additions, second-story additions, and similar improvements. The planning team also processed hundreds of use requests and business licenses and processed approximately 20 requests for parking deviations, several, several of which the Planning Commission considered, such as a recently approved animal hospital, adult daycare, and Renaissance School. Planning staff also reviewed and improved 68 ADUs this year. And as you may recall, the commission considered and revised the ADU ordinance and made a recommendation to the City Council. The city's Building Department is one of the city's most busiest and important department teams, as well as reviewing projects for permanent issuance and inspecting these structures once built. The team's most important duty is to ensure that the city's buildings are safely constructed and can be safely occupied. The city's Building Department is also one of the most efficient departments in the county and busiest. In 2022, the Building Staff Team assisted almost 9,000 customers and generally had these property owners and developers in and out of the City Hall in less than an hour. The city's Community Improvement Team is also very important in the city. The team ensures codes are complied with in both existing businesses and residential environments and responds and enforces to land use compliance, housing violations, illegal construction, and public nuisances. Much of these team efforts goes without notice because they accomplish many of their goals by assistance rather than penalties and violations. In 2022, the city Community Improvement Team investigated approximately 1,000 public concerns. Finally, the Community Improvement Staff Team also performs regular community service events that assists residents and improves their quality of life. For example, in the past year or so, the staff team has worked with several communities on Saturdays and held neighborhood cleanup events. The Economic Development Team is one of the department's newest efforts and has shown great promise over the last few years. Although currently only staffed by one full-time staff person, many other city staff and members of the City Council and public assist in this effort. For example, the staff team works with the city's business groups and also attends a yearly economic business conference in Las Vegas that shows off the city as a great place to operate a business. The team is also working currently on Economic Development Strategic Plan for the city, which is expected to be completed in the near future and will describe a plan for an increased and managed economic system in the city. Many existing and new businesses and public amenities, such as Van Shoes, Androol, and the city's recently approved museum, have benefited the local community because of the efforts of the Economic Development Staff Team. Also, one of the newest businesses that are coming to the city is Shake Shack, which will be coming out on 17th Street. The city's Housing and Community Development Team is responsible for planning and managing several federal and state grants, including the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnership Grant, and the Low Moderate Housing Fund. This team utilizes these grants to fund and administer several council-approved programs and projects to assist community members in improving residents' access to quality housing. The team works directly with families that receive grants and assists them through the implementation and use of these funds. And I will now turn this back over to... Jennifer. Actually, I will do one more before I do that. I'll go into the 2022 Planning Commission Year End Review, which is really the reason for this presentation. And so as you may remember, and for some of the new commissioners who were not on PC at the time, the Planning Commission in 2022 is very busy. And as you can see by this slide, I have listed a few of the many entitlements and efforts that were approved and considered by the commission. For most of the 19 Planning Commission public hearings that occurred in 2022, the commission considered three or four agenda items. Importantly, the commission in 2022 reviewed projects for several large businesses that will provide key employment resources in the city, such as a large pharmaceutical operation in the airport industrial area, a large senior daycare on Newport Boulevard, a temporary relocation of the Orange County courts, and a large school, which included the reuse of a large vacant commercial building located on one of the city's main corridors. Several retail facility operations were also approved in 2022 that required discretionary approval, notably including an axe-throwing use, a revision to one of the city's restaurants for valet and off-site parking, and a new convenience store. The Planning Commission also reviewed and recommended approval of the city's revised ADU ordinance. And last but not least, the Planning Commission also started a review of the first cannabis storefront retail operations. As I said, 2022 saw the implementation beginning of the city's cannabis retail storefront program. This program is extremely comprehensive and includes numerous levels of review and required permit conditions. The Planning Commission was introduced officially to this program in March of 2022 during three staff presentations. Staff also hosted several days of tours for the Planning Commission and visited several of the Santa Ana cannabis retail stores. These tours were extremely eye-opening for both the commission and staff. Soon after the commission tours of the retail facilities in Santa Ana and the ordinance presentations, the commission reviewed the first two cannabis retail operations that only included delivery at that time. And two months later, the commission reviewed the first two brick-and-mortar storefronts on Harbor Boulevard and Newport Boulevard, which was in June. By the end of 2022, the commission reviewed approximately 20 cannabis retail applications. And as of this date, 16 brick-and-mortar storefronts have been permitted. For the next few slides, like I said, I will hand the mic over to Jennifer to provide details of some of the city efforts that are soon to come, which will require Planning Commission review. Some of these reviews will require a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the City Council, and others will require the commission's direct approval.
Thank you, Mr. Drapkin. So I will wrap up this presentation with just a little look ahead for the commission. Some of this is reminiscent of the study session that was provided to the City Council not too long ago. But we also wanted to highlight these projects that will specifically likely be coming before the Planning Commission. So I'll provide a brief overview of state law mandates, housing element update, and the completion of that effort, as well as its implementation over the next three years, our community visioning and rezoning effort. A highlight on our Senior Center Housing Project at the city's Senior Center Site, the city's Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, which has been a topic of discussion for some time, as well as the Pedestrian Master Plan and our planning efforts on the Fairview Developmental Center Site. Next slide, please. So I won't go through each of these state law mandates. There, I will just say that the state legislature has been prolific this year in its approval of new requirements and state mandates that essentially require the city to update its general plan as well as some of its ordinances. So in summary, the city's safety element, as well as its circulation and open space element, are among the chapters of the city's general plan that we expect to update to respond to state mandates in the coming next few years. We also have state mandates regarding incorporating environmental justice policies throughout the city's general plan. Regarding municipal code updates, again, there are many state laws that, that were passed, and some of them became, were passed at the end of 2022 and then became effective January 1st. We also have several other state mandates that became, that will become effective July 1st of this year. And then a few follow on in the, in the coming fiscal years as well. So we have a variety of deadlines, of overlapping deadlines to respond to from the state. But they can generally be summarized into these four categories here. We expect to need to update the city's parking standards to respond to state law, as well as update the residential development standards for multifamily housing in our commercial and industrial zones. We expect to update the city's development process to respond to some new state requirements and also to update our density bonus requirements in the city's zoning code. Regarding our housing element, this commission is well-versed in the housing element and discussed it many, many times last year on, on its course to adoption at the City Council. And the city has submitted that housing element to state HCD and is awaiting its certification. More importantly, for our planning efforts, the housing element includes over 47, over 45, approximately 47 housing element programs that are required to be implemented over the next eight years. But the majority of those programs are really required to be implemented within the first three years of the eight-year planning period. So you can imagine... So you can imagine what an effort that that will be for staff and the city overall. Next, I want to highlight the community visioning and zoning updates. Again, these are updates with the objective of providing additional affordable housing opportunities citywide and also an opportunity for revitalized key commercial and industrial corridors throughout the city. The steps involved, we intend to start with community visioning forums as we always do with any major planning effort to talk about ultimately our goals and objectives for each one of these specific areas within the city. But ultimately, they will require a general plan update, updates to multiple specific plans and urban plans within the city. This is the first city that I've worked in that have had 11 specific plan and urban plans that have essentially cite or area-specific development standards citywide. So it's a very complex zoning scheme. I think it's something that we intend to make more efficient if we can going through this process. It will also include a zoning code update and ultimately likely an environmental impact report for CEQA compliance. Next, I want to highlight our upcoming efforts on the Fairview Developmental Center site. As you know, the city was successful in securing $3.5 million in state funds to plan and zone for future land uses at the Fairview Development Center, primarily housing. And that effort is required to be completed within the next three years. And again, that effort will begin with community visioning forums, but it will also involve a general plan update, the development of a Fairview Developmental Center specific plan. Again, an environmental impact report is the likely environmental review document for that effort. And at the same time, the city is also coordinating with the state regarding the state's CalOES facility at the Fairview Development Center site. You heard a little bit about that earlier in Commissioner comments. The state held its first public scoping meeting earlier today and they are asking for public comments to be submitted to them by March 31st. And at this stage, it's just the first stage of the state's process, but essentially what they're asking for is feedback regarding what should be studied in the state's environmental impact report so that when that report is developed, it can respond to community questions and comments. Our next effort is the inclusionary housing ordinance. This has been something that was identified as a six-month council goal previously and staff are moving that ordinance forward. We expect to begin with some outreach and stakeholders meetings. Ultimately, we need to prepare an ordinance and program guidelines and that will come before the Planning Commission and the city council for public hearings. I last want to highlight the Senior Center Housing Project. This is a proposal by Jamboree Housing to utilize a portion of the city's senior center parking lot to develop 60 affordable senior housing units. The process for this is an urban plan screening. Since it is within one of our urban plan areas, it will require an urban plan screening to be presented to the city council for just an initial review and feedback. But ultimately, the master plan for that project will come before the Planning Commission for review. It involves some requests related to land division on how the city's senior center and this housing project would ultimately share the existing site. It'll involve an affordable housing agreement with the city as well as a lease agreement that will ultimately be approved by city council or considered by city council for approval. So with that, I just wanted to wrap up by saying that similar to 2022, we expect that the next few years will be a very busy time for the Planning Commission as well as for city staff. We'll be processing day-to-day project applications and bringing those to you for your decisions and we'll also be bringing to you a number of obviously high-profile and planning efforts, long-range planning efforts that are very important to the city's future. So with that, I'll wrap up and I'll just say that the council held its retreat on Friday. So we did get some very good feedback from the council as to its goals and priorities and essentially what it did was reaffirm and prioritize the items that I just presented to you. So staff will be allocating its resources appropriately and will be moving ahead with those efforts in the coming months and years. So that concludes my presentation and Mr. Drapkin and I are happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Thank you, Mr. Drapkin. Thank you. That was a wonderful presentation. I'm sure we all got a lot out of it and have a lot of questions. I'll go ahead and reserve most of my questions till the end, but I will say I don't think that you've prepared 5,000 pages in the last year. I think it's more like six, just because I have all of them at home and they're all stacked up. So I think it's either six or maybe 8,000 at this point. Anyway, I will turn it over to the commission. Would anyone like to ask some questions here? Commissioner Vivar.
Yeah, I'd like to echo Chairman Erath's comments. I think you guys have done a great, great job in the past 16 months, 17 months that I've been here on the Planning Commission and I'm sure before that as well, before my time here. Mr. Drapkin has been great. He started around the same time I did here at the city and it's been great working with him and Ms. Lee. And so I just wanted to thank you for your hard work on all the applications. I know it can be a sometimes kind of a thankless job and sort of working in the shadows and, you know, getting, you know, pushed right and left, up and down by city council or by Planning Commission and, you know, being able to, you know, cater towards concerns that are brought up and, you know, serve our residents and their businesses. So first of all, I want to thank you because I think this presentation, besides being a review of what we've done here on Planning Commission and what the city has done as a whole, I think, is also a review of your great work in the city and it's a testament to all of the effort that city staff puts into all of this. So first of all, I just wanted to thank you for all of that. I do want to ask about sort of some numbers that I heard in the meetings, so in the presentation. So 42 applications, if I remember correctly, were processed last year, in the year of 2022 for here up on Planning Commission. Do you have a number of... Do you happen to know the number of how many of those were retail applications? Because you mentioned the axe-throwing facility. Obviously, that was one of many. And so I'm just curious how many of the retail applications were part of those 42?
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. As far as retail cannabis applications, is that your question?
Retail applications, because I think the axe-throwing facility probably counts as retail and I'm sure we saw some other little retail projects here and there. So I'm just curious what the number of retail projects was, cannabis and other?
I would say, I mean, knowing that the cannabis would take up at least approximately 16 of those, I would probably add in another, sprinkle in another 10 or 15. The 42 also includes public hearings to city council as well, so it's not just the commission.
Right. So 20 applications, 20 retail cannabis applications out of 40, to me, almost sounds like 50/50. So it, it, I know that the city staff has spent a lot of time on this, on Measure Q, but it seems, I think it's worth seeing the sort of the sheer number of applications that come in and how high it is. So you would say that most of the business-related applications that we saw last year were Measure Q-related retail cannabis, right?
I would say a high percentage, yeah.
And I'm not sure if my colleagues up here followed the study session that was done by city council several, couple, several weeks ago. But I know the question or the question was raised as to about how, how much in terms of staff resources and time was utilized for retail cannabis, Measure Q? Do you happen to have that kind of percentage of sort of your work breakdown in terms of hours worked and how much of that went to retail cannabis as opposed to everything else we saw?
I can answer that. We don't have a breakdown in terms of hours worked. I think the best indication that we have is sort of the proportion of total Planning Commission items that were presented being retail cannabis. And as, as Mr. Drapkin said, it's a, it's around a little less than half, it looks like, so.
Right. So since that 20 out of 42 would be the sort of fraction for cannabis applications we saw this year, or last year, do you, do you have an idea of what that number could be for the year of 2023? Because I'm just, I am concerned that we'll be using again about half of our resources on something that we spent a lot of time on last year. And I would just like to make sure that we're able to process other applications in an expeditious manner for other business or retail applications, housing, as was mentioned in the staff report. So do you happen to know or have an idea of what that breakdown would be this year? If it'd be around the same, a little less than 50%? Or do you think that we could see either an increase or a decrease in that number?
Well, I would say I don't have a percentage moving forward because that depends largely on the denominator of the total number of applications that we bring to the Planning Commission. But I will say that there's approximately 40 retail cannabis conditional use permit applications. We, the, a total, the Planning Commission has heard almost 20. So we have approximately 20 left to hear. I don't imagine, based on resource allocations to the various other projects that we have heard about tonight and before tonight, that there may be the same number coming to Planning Commission this year as last year. We're going to work as hard as we can to bring those conditional use permit applications forward as quickly as possible. But we do need to address the reality that we need to allocate staff resources to some of these other efforts as well. So Mr. Drapkin and I will be spending a good portion of our time organizing staff resources, retaining consultants for some of these major efforts as appropriate. Ultimately, we always try to work through our project workload as efficiently as possible. So we'll continue to do that.
Right. Yeah. So, yeah, thank you for that, you know. And as was mentioned at the, as well, a comment made by a member of council or several on the sort of the staff resource allocation topic. You know, I, I'm looking forward to seeing staff's resources this year spent in a more balanced way. So I appreciate you and Ms. Lee and Mr. Drapkin's efforts on that front. And I think that's it for me, Mr. Chairman. I'll defer back to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Any other commissioners? No, no, no. Vice Chair.
Sure. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for all the hard work you guys always do. I just have all these things on my screen that seem very exciting. And it's probably too much to ask, but something like a timeline would be, I don't know if everyone else is feeling it. We've been hearing about these things for a long time and I'd love to know just a general kind of target seasons of the year that we're planning on, some of these things. When the, for example, the senior center I've been hearing about for a while and the community visioning I've been hearing about for a while. So do we have any idea?
We have some very general timelines. Obviously, we're still mapping out resources and ensuring that we can move all of these projects forward in a reasonable timeline. So I'd say that you can expect the kickoff of our community visioning and rezoning efforts in summer of this year. The same with the Fairview Development Center site. We have approximately a two-to-three time, a two-to-three-year timeline for each one of those projects. It's a very, it's a huge effort, so we'll be phasing many of the milestones and components of these efforts. But our goal is to complete them within a two-to-three-year period. Regarding the senior center project, largely that timeline is driven by the project applicant. Maybe Mr. Drapkin would want to give a, just a quick update of our most recent conversations with them.
Thanks, yeah. The senior center, we've been working on for almost a year now, maybe a little bit longer. It was with a, with one of their project managers who has recently left. They're working on revising the plan. We had some issues with regards to how the parking would be accounted for at the center with regards to shared use of the senior center itself. They did, they made some plan changes where originally they desired to provide a parking structure underground. And their latest version was to use the parking at the center in addition to the senior center where there would be basically a, no real change in the amount of parking. So they submitted a proposal that had, was a parking engineer and requested that they do an analysis where they know how much the senior center parking demand is and their parking demand. And we're working through that as well as a couple of other things. But for the most part, we're just working with them regularly. And I would think probably, and we should have some type of a plan, I would say, somewhere to go to a city council screening at least in the next six months, so.
Yeah, I don't mean to put any pressure on anybody. I just was curious when these would come up. Thank you.
Is that all, Vice Chair?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
We're getting used to the pressure now, so it's okay.
Commissioner Tabor, before I hand it over to you, I'll just make a quick comment that I share in the Vice Chair's sentiments about having a rough estimate about the timeline. And it's actually something that Commissioner Zick said a couple of meetings ago as well about like what do we have coming down the pipeline? I think it'd be great to have that, but I also realize that there's so much change right now that it's really hard to peg exactly when these things are going to be coming to us. So I don't know if we can get some kind of forecast as to when these things are going to come, but I also know that you guys are under, you have a lot on your plate already, so. And I think that's it for me. Commissioner Tabor.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. As the new commissioner, it's super informative and eye-opening and love to see the detail. And it looks like a huge body of work that you've accomplished and obviously that's upcoming. And my question is, do you feel that the department's adequately staffed? I know there's some new additions either just happened or coming soon. And you talked about the use of consultants. And one reason I ask is the guy a couple of weeks ago that was building that east side, you know, two houses in one of the different lots, and it seemed like it took quite a while to get him to this point. And so is there enough staff to, you know, reasonably get through the body of work? Or do we need more staff? Do we need more consultants?
So I would say that it's very typical for a development services operation to be staffed to process day-to-day operations. There aren't very many cities that are staffed to process the type of long-range planning projects that we have on our plates and that we intend to move forward to the Planning Commission and the council. So we are always looking at a combination of consultants, contract staff and in-house staff to manage the workload that we have. This is a very unique time, I would say, in that we have multiple overlapping deadlines for large projects. That usually isn't the case in addition to day-to-day operations at a really high level. So I think we're at a very unique time. You will see as part of our budget discussions with the council, some staffing requests, but we do expect to use a combination of consultants, contract staff and in-house staff to meet all of these timelines.
So if it was a normal year and we're staffed adequately and we're not doing an abundance of major projects at the same time, that guy that was doing those houses, I think he said it was 10 months or something to get to that point? Would that usually not take that long?
Yeah, so our average timelines are about six months from the beginning of a, the beginning of an application to actually a hearing before the Planning Commission. beginning of an application to actually a hearing before the Planning Commission. That is very typical and actually pretty, pretty fast compared to other cities. I would say the timelines usually are hugely dependent on the responsiveness of the applicant. A lot of times, it's a back-and-forth in terms of revisions and requests from staff to the applicant and then the applicant resubmitting to staff. So timelines are very dependent on a healthy relationship between the staff and the applicant and working together.
Cool. Thank you. Is that all, Commissioner Tabor? Okay, great. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Rojas? Commissioner Zick? Commissioner Andrade? Nope? All right, I guess it goes to me. I have several questions, but I'll try to work expeditiously through this. Revisiting some of what Commissioner Vivar was asking about Measure Q retail and the number of applications we have left, it's my understanding that the Planning Department is starting to look at a lot of this other work right now that's ahead of us. So it's not to say that retail cannabis is falling to the wayside, but we are now starting to look at all this work ahead of us. I don't know if you want to comment on that. Or are we some, I guess more specifically, are we augmenting the number of applications that we're going to see moving forward on the Measure Q front?
I wouldn't say we're augmenting the number of applications. What we're doing is essentially looking at all of our staff resources, and a good portion of it has been allocated to, obviously, cannabis retail processing. So we do need to appropriately allocate staff. We'll bring on consultants. We'll look at whether it's a successful approach to bring on contract staff, but essentially we do need to start diversifying the things that, the major projects that we're working on. Cannabis applications are definitely one of them, and we'll continue to try to process those efficiently.
If I can just add to what you just said, Ms. Lee, is the idea to do more in addition to the regular volume of Measure Q applications that we've been seeing, or, I mean, it seems like we've been processing about one and a half, well, maybe two a month since we started hearing it back in June. Are we thinking?
On average, I'd say that's right.
Yeah.
One to two a month.
Okay. So I don't know if we're, if it's de-emphasizing Measure Q retail or if it's just adding to what we've already been doing, but just adding other items for other planning business.
Right. It's adding to, it may result in adjustments in terms of the timelines, but that's not our, that's not our plan at all. Our goal is to just continue to process applications. There are conditional use permit applications, like many others, so our goal is to continue to process them, but we are balancing the reality of having to allocate staff to other things.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. And on Slide 4 of your presentation, you were mentioning SB 379 and the city's policy to further environmental sustainability and climate resiliency. I know that it's been a little while since we've had the sustainability and energy manager position that's been filled, so I don't know how are we actually getting to fulfill SB 379 moving forward? Because I know just from personal, professional experience being in the field that a person who's working in sustainability will cross over into many departments and to do many different things, because it's all kind of a seamless thread through the operations. So I don't know what, if there's any update there.
Yeah, so a couple things there. The energy and sustainability manager position is actually held in our Public Works Department, but there is an interdepartmental, I'll call it, green team that, because sustainability goals and efforts do cross over multiple departments, so there is an interdepartmental green team that works towards the city's collective environmental sustainability goals. So I know that the Public Works Department is looking forward to filling that energy and sustainability manager position that was vacated, I believe it was last year, and I think that recruitment is active now. So it's a big part of moving forward compliance with that particular state law, but as is urban planners, we also have a good amount of training in environmental sustainability just over the course of our urban planning profession. So we have that to help us along in the meantime.
I believe it. Thank you so much. Mr. Drapkin, if you can go to Slide 35. I just wanted to make sure I was reading the information correctly. It was in regards to the environmental impact report for community visioning and zoning updates. Is it common for an EIR to be exercised when it's just a visioning process, or are we referring to something different here?
Yeah, the visioning process is just one component of the process of doing the multiple specific plan and general plan updates. That's where the EIR comes in.
Okay, I didn't know, because we, we kind of got into this in the housing element with the negative declaration, which is, is there an actual environmental impact statement or report that's warranted just for assessing housing in the city?
Right.
Or something similar? So I didn't know. Okay, thank you. I think if we go to Slide 37, if you could, Mr. Drapkin. I will also echo Commissioner Vivar's statement about attending the City Council study session, and I thought it was very informative in many ways. But I think when it comes to this discussion of the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance that we discussed ad nauseam during the housing element update, I have every bit of faith that the Planning Department can develop a very high-quality inclusionary housing element. So I just wanted to say that because I know that we were walking with that for a long, a long time. So going on to number 38, Slide 38, we're talking about the senior center. Why only 60 affordable units on this space? I know I keep mentioning the housing element, but it's still kind of like fresh after reading it a couple hundred times, is that seniors are, you know, our local seniors here in Costa Mesa are in desperate need of housing moving forward. So if they are a target community for us, why would we only stop at 60 on the site?
I would say, Chair, that the 60 is the estimate from the applicant and their proposal, and I think there's a number of factors that go into that, including site feasibility, but also just funding for the project. So this is the number that the applicant proposed.
And we only have one applicant for this project, or did this go out for an RFP process, and this was the only one that qualified or was chosen, or?
Originally, Jamboree Housing had an exclusive negotiating agreement with the city, so they are the nonprofit that has submitted the application for this site.
Okay, great. All right, I will be very interested to hear more about that, if there are any developments. So with that, I'll just circle back around to the commission. Does anyone else have any questions? No? No? All right, well, I think at this point, thank you, Ms. Lee and Mr. Drapkin. That was really informative. I really appreciate it. Thank you. And I will now move on to departmental reports, starting with Mr. Yang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Public Works Department don't have any reports to give, but I'll give a short update on the Placentia Avenue, West 19th and East 17th project that Commissioner Vivar mentioned at the beginning of this meeting. So as you recall, the City Council awarded a construction contract to All American Asphalt on January 17th of January of 2023, and we have basically finished up with the public works agreement, and also we're waiting for the purchase order to be issued, upon which we plan on starting construction sometime in April. So essentially, for West 19th Street, we're looking at doing from Sundance Drive all the way to Park Avenue, which will consist of doing Class II bike lanes consistent with our active transportation plan, and that is also the same true as well for Placentia Avenue, which starts at Adams Avenue all the way down south at West 16th Street. We'll have buffered Class II bike lanes from Adams Avenue down to Wilson Street, and those will consist of the K-71 delineators, as you're familiar with, on Merrimack Way and also around Bristol Street as well. So we're looking at, once again, around mid to late April for the start of that project. In conjunction, we're also going to embark on the traffic signal project as well on West 19th and Wallace with the construction of a new traffic signal, as well as bulb outs at that intersection, and also new hog signals at Lyons Park and also at Wilson Park as well. So that, in terms of the construction schedule, is also slated for mid to late April as well. So that's my update on those two significant projects, and I'll defer back to the chair. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Yang, and I will say, as a side note, I always appreciate you sitting in on these meetings. I know you don't get to talk very often, but we're so glad when you're here to answer our questions, so thanks for being here. Appreciate it. Ms. Lee, Development Services.
Thank you, Karen. Nothing further this evening.
Okay, thank you. And City Attorney, Mr. Prezioci.
Nothing this evening, Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Prezioci, and that brings us to the end of our meeting. I will now adjourn the meeting for March 27, 2023. Thank you very much.